All right, everybody. I've got six o'clock straight up. Well, I guess it's not straight up anymore because we use digital clocks. I think we're just missing Tom. And we're ready to go. And Diane? Unless... Are you substituting for Diane tonight?
I hope not.
Just checking. You're always welcome. So I see Tom now as well.
Diane is getting...
My papers.
She's getting dinner?
The final papers.
Yeah, my daughter. Okay, I'm here. Thank you.
It's been a nice thing seeing you.
So the other staff's ready to go. Hello. All right. I think we have a quorum. I'm going to go ahead and call the September 15th City of Trinidad Planning Commission meeting to order. And if we could start with a roll call, please.
Ronson? Commissioner Hakinen?
Present.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Here.
And Commissioner Stockness? So everyone's here.
Everybody's here. Fabulous. All right. So the first order of business tonight is a review of the minutes from the June 28th and July 21st meeting. I'm going to go ahead and start with public comments on the minutes, if there are any. So let me open it up to public comments on the minutes. Sorry for the delay. Your headphones just went out. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. I just switched to the computer speaker, which is not the best. But anyway, I saw no public comments. Commissioners, do you have any comments on the meeting minutes? No. I'm seeing heads shaking. I did not have any. Richard, do you have any? Or Diane?
No comments, but I'll abstain from the June minutes as I was not present.
Thank you. Diane, you're on mute. You're still on mute. There you go.
No comments.
Okay. All right. Then I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes as they stand. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I see unanimous approval of the minutes for those two meetings. So with that, let's go ahead and move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any questions or comments about the agenda for tonight's meeting? It's a pretty, pretty short one. Diane?
I would just like to finish at eight o'clock because I'm leaving town and I know someone else is. Maybe it's Trevor. Yeah.
Trevor's trying to get out of here as well.
Out of, gone all day. So yeah. Eight o'clock.
I'm sometimes overly optimistic about our timeline, but I was thinking that given what I see here, that an hour, hour and a half is probably the most we'll need tonight.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So I could be wrong. Sometimes things, you know, go in a different direction. So I hear, I don't see any recommended changes. Raise your hand if you want to change anything. I think I'm fine with it as is. Okay. I see heads nodding, so I think we're good to go. So with that, though, I will go ahead and open up to items from the floor. This is the time in the meeting where we allow the, or invite the community to speak for up to three minutes on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So please note that pursuant to the Brown Act, we will not, the commissioners are not allowed to discuss those items in detail, other than to just offer a brief comment or question. But we will be able to... Yes, sorry, one second. I'm just replying to the city clerk. Yes, I believe we mentioned both June and July minutes. Did everyone understand that I was talking about both? Okay, heads are nodding.
Yep.
Arrival of both. Apologies if I didn't make that clear.
And the record just needs to show that I abstained from June, and I think Diane needs to abstain from July.
Good catch. Thank you. I didn't catch that Diane was abstaining from July, so thank you for that. Is that right, Diane? Is that what you remember?
She was there. She was just a little late.
Oh.
My apologies. You're absolutely right. Sorry, Diane.
You're muted, Diane.
Okay. You're still on mute, Diane, but I think you're probably just saying that it's fine. Okay. All right. Let's, sorry. Apologies, community. Are there any items from the floor? Are there any members of the community that would like to speak at this time? Okay. I do not see any, but you know, feel free if anybody, if I miss anybody, come off mute and just go ahead and, and let me know. But it looks like we're good to go. And with that then, I would like to move ahead to our first agenda item for tonight. And that is the Vanderpool 2021 7B zoning conformance. The zoning conformance review to convert the Presbyterian Church building to an art center with community advance. The activities would include, but not necessarily be limited to various classes, yoga, painting, art shows, movie showings, musical performances and community gatherings. And this building is located at 426 Trinity Street. And I won't read the APN number, but it is in the document. So Trevor, I think what we'll do then is start with the staff report, if we can.
Thank you. Yeah. So this is a little bit different because this isn't a permit approval. This is a change from one principally permitted use to another principally permitted use. You know, the uses that are proposed are probably a little bit more intense than, you know, the uses as a church. But you know, under that zoning and use of the church, you know, they could have done any or all of these things. So it's, it's still consistent with the zoning, but there's been enough public and planning commission interest in the project, I think, and questions about it that I thought it was worthwhile to bring it forward. And the other thing is that, you know, this is, this is a change in use. And I think it would be worthwhile putting some limitations on it in terms of hours of operation, things like that, to make sure that it does sort of stay within, you know, the zoning and consistent with, with those allowable uses and not to impact neighbors and things like that. So, so this is just a confirmation of zoning conformity from the planning commission. And so the, I think the primary piece of this is the conditions of approval. You know, if there are some concerns about the impacts, the neighborhood, we want to pay special attention to those. So just the, the property sold recently. The church building is, is quite old. I was actually surprised at how old it is, maybe even going back to 1919, which is what the accessory record shows. So it could be a historic structure, but nothing, at least nothing external is changing. It would need a professional report to determine if it's actually historically significant. Because that's not just about age. It's about, you know, architecture, events, people, things like that, that occurred there. But no external changes. Interior changes to historic buildings are fine. No exterior changes are proposed at this time. The owners have also submitted an application to change the zoning from the PR, the public and religious, to plan development, which would allow a greater mix of uses. But that's, I've been working with them to get some additional information. I don't know if you guys approved the zone change for Reinman a few years ago. And that seemed pretty straightforward since, you know, it was really nothing changing except the zoning to make it more conforming. The coastal commission really asked for a lot of analysis in terms of what that site can support. And it does make some sense. We don't want to approve that as PD zoning if it really can't support any of those uses. So that's kind of the idea. So we're, we're working through that, but that's going to take a little bit of time. So in the meantime, the owners have, have decided to allow the West Haven Center for the Arts to use the building as well as to host some, some classes and events themselves that fit within the existing zoning. I do want to get the building inspector into the building to see if the change of use or anything requires any upgrades to the building and to get an idea of the, the capacity of, of the building as well. He was out sick the last couple of weeks, but I, I believe he's going to, he will inspect it tomorrow. So there's a condition that, you know, any upgrades he, he recommends will be required. Let's see. So like I said, it is consistent with, with the zoning. I did send a referral to the health department. They don't have any issues. There is a small kitchen in the building, but there's no cooking facilities. And so they can't, that's one of the stipulations is they can't cook there without further, further approval because that could impact the septic system. And they also have to keep their water use to the design, design flow for the septic system. So like I said, no exterior changes. So you know, setbacks, height, the building already complies with, with those things and none of that's changing. There is an issue on the site with parking. Obviously, the site has, there's no onsite parking and there never has been. The church had an agreement with the school to utilize that parking lot outside of school hours. So that's what they did. And the new owners also have gotten written permission to use the, the parking at the school outside of school hours. So another limitation on this is that the, the events and activities that they're hosting can only occur outside of school hours because otherwise they don't have any parking. So as part of the zone change and any other change of use, parking is going to have to be reevaluated. But for this, as long as, as things occur outside of school, when school, outside of one school is in session, that will be fine. The sign did change. Basically, they took out the Presbyterian Church sign and put in a Trinidad Art Center sign about the same size. Again, we, you're, could potentially be argued that a change in sign and copy requires design review, but we've never required that. Again, think Saunders Shopping Center, you know, various businesses change, uses change, signs change. And we, we don't require review of that. So this is basically a similar situation. It's just in, in a more sensitive location, I guess. The project, I looked at Coastal Act and, and general plan policies, even though this isn't a coastal development permit, just to ensure consistency. There's actually a, a city general plan policy that encourages the school to schedule arts and craft programs and other recreation activities during the summer. And so this kind of fills, fills that niche. And Coastal Act doesn't really deal with a lot of policies on uses, except not to interfere with coastal dependent uses. You know, this project isn't going to affect coastal access. It's not going to affect potential for coastal dependent or coastal related uses. It's not going to affect any sensitive habitat. So there's really no, there's no issues with potential Coastal Act policies being violated. It's not in an area subject to hazards. The septic system, like I said, was, was recently completely replaced with a new system, basically the same as a, as a three bedroom house. So that is in good standing. No soil disturbance is proposed. So staff recommendation is, is for approval. I'll just note the conditions that we've got there. The standard applicant is responsible for reimbursing the city for all costs. Activities shall be limited to those described in the application materials without city planner authorization for similar activities. So if they want to add something to their list of activities, I can approve that if it is similar. Activities shall only occur outside of school operating hours. And activities are only allowable as long as the school continues to allow the applicants to utilize their parking lot. I put a time limit. That time limit is somewhat, you know, it's kind of standard quiet hours in a lot of cities. And I think those are the quiet hours that the city, that Trinidad talked about when it was looking at a noise ordinance. But those, yeah, I think those are up for discussion. Capacity of activities is limited to that determined by the building official. So I want to, you know, figure out what, what the legal capacity is for the building, which is probably based on fire code. And that the applicants will complete any repairs and improvements required by the building official. They will maintain an OWTS operating permit and limit water use to the design flow of 450 gallons per day. And that will conclude my report.
All right. Thank you. I believe the applicant is here and I will offer, if you would like to add any comments, you're, you're more than welcome to. It's not necessary, but you can if you want. Well, for some reason, we're not getting your audio right now. Let's see here. You don't appear to be on mute, but huh.
Hello.
Okay. All right. I'm so sorry. If that, if you get that working, let us know. Feel free to interrupt us. Raise your hand and we'll, we'll stop so you can add your, add your, your thoughts.
Okay. I will note, you could use the chat function and then also the, if you go to the city calendar and click on the link for this, click on this meeting, there's a phone number you could dial in if that might work better for you.
Trevor, thank you. So yeah, the chat function on the side will allow you to put in comments and, and/or calling in. We'll be able to at least hear your audio. So I just wanted to ask one really quick clarifying question, Trevor, and then, and then the commissioners, we'll start with the commissioners and we'll open to public comments. But my, so just to clarify, we are not deciding tonight on any new zoning designations, but rather just approving these uses that the applicant has proposed for the existing building and with the existing zoning designation. Is that correct?
That's correct. So you're not approving a zone change? You're not approving a coastal development permit or use permit? It's just sort of a, a public concurrence that what is being proposed is, is consistent with the zoning and allowable use.
I see. And, and it appears from your list and the existing zoning that the proposed activities do fall within the PNR description. Okay. All right. That was my understanding. Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you. Commissioners, does anyone want to start us off with some questions? Or comments? Did I see, Tom, did you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
I was curious if the neighbor Barbara was on board with everything that you're going to be doing here.
I did send out notices to neighbors. We did get one letter of support from a neighbor across the street. You got, did you get that Cheryl, I think?
Yes.
From Patty, Patty Fleischner? I have not heard anything from, from Barbara, but she was sent a notice.
Okay. And then is that, that roof has a bit of a swell to it or dips in the center? Is that being addressed at all or is that, is that something to be concerned about?
That would not be an issue that I would be involved in, but that would be something that the building inspector will take a look at. And so if he requires any upgrades as a result of his inspection for health and safety or, you know, what building code compliance, they will need to address that.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Hopkins? Any other comments or questions?
I had just a couple. Let me find one. Trevor, you mentioned a condition of no food. I did not see that listed in the conditions of approval, unless I missed it, that there would be no cooking. I know it's kind of implied without a kitchen, but that's... And I have another question. Town hall, are the quiet hours for town hall for using that? So are those also 10 to seven right now? Does anybody know?
They are.
They are. Okay.
You have to, like, the, the event has to be over by 10, but you, you know, there's still cleanup and stuff goes on, I think, till 11.
Okay. And I had a question regarding, I appreciate the agreement with the school being here. But as a parent with a, with a school aged kid, there are events that happen outside of school hours, back to school night, carnivals, things like that, pre-COVID. And we would love to get back to that at some point. And I don't know if that's within our purview to require kind of a hierarchical structure that the school gets precedent over, you know, since it's their parking lot. I don't know if that's implied or if we can add that in. But I would, I would hate to, you know, I mean, that's, that's kind of the only overflow parking lot in town that gets used and abused. And of course, you know, parking is a sentinel issue in our community for obvious reasons. So I don't know, Trevor, what your thoughts on that are, if that's something we could add in or...
Yeah, those are both good issues. And yes, I meant to add a condition about cooking and it did not make it in there. So we could add that to condition eight. Or it could be a separate condition, but that has to do with the OWTS requirements. So I could just add that to the end. Average water use on an annual basis is limited to the design flow. There shall be no cooking without prior authorization from the city and Division of Environmental Health. So we can add that to that condition. Good catch. The parking and yeah, that's a good issue. I think, I think we could condition it. I...
Yeah, I don't know if we could put a condition on somebody else's, you know?
Yeah, no, I, I think we can because since they are relying on the school for parking. You know, we could add something to condition number three. Activities will only occur outside of school operating hours and special events.
And yeah, specialized school events. I just, you know, assuming someday we get to return to basketball and, and all those types of things. I want to make sure that has priority for, for folks to be able to park.
Yeah. And there might be small things, you know, basketball practice probably wouldn't matter, but a basketball, a lot fills up. So, you know, the, you know, I'll add some language about the applicant coordinating with the school to avoid school events.
And then finally, a member of the community did reach out to me and I spoke with them just kind of about this. And their, their primary concern is that the, the uses that are being proposed are not in accordance with the current zoning. And from your professional opinion, Trevor, they are within, I mean, looking through your list here and looking through the municipal code, they do kind of, to me, seem to be in alignment with allowable uses, even though it's been a, a church, you know, like you said, and that, you know, like I said, if you go into the municipal code, it kind of seems like they fit with that. Is that...
Yeah, absolutely. Because it's, you know, principally permitted uses include social organizations, recreation centers, public and private schools, cultural facilities, including museums, libraries and auditoriums. So, you know, private school covers the classes. Social organizations, recreation centers, auditoriums cover music and, and, you know, theater performance kind of events. So I think, you know, to me, the uses fit quite well within, within those allowable uses.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have right now.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hickon. Commissioner Stockness, I think I saw your hand raised.
Okay. So the, I need to tell you, I had a conversation today for a few minutes with Jan West, who is president of the school board. And I asked her if she knew about the meeting and what was on the agenda. And then I asked her about the parking lot. And the parking lot was not brought up at a school board meeting. But we did get a letter in our packet from Elise saying that, you know, we can, the school district have agreed that the arts center may use the district's parking lot for events and activities during non-school hours. This includes school holidays, weekends and evenings. And so she probably needed to add what Erin said. Soccer games, basketball practice, basketball games to that, you know? And okay, so I'm going to start on page two because I have several comments. So they, they need a license, right, Trevor? To operate?
We need a business license, yes.
So they put up a sign, like they had the art center. And I didn't think that was legal. There were some other people in town that said, you know, what's, what's going on? And I said, there, it's a change of use. And the buyers want to do some cultural and art and music. And then on the last paragraph, it said, "The city hasn't required approval for changes from one principally permitted use to another." Businesses in Saunders Shopping Center. Well, that's a shopping center. This is a whole nother entity. You know, it was a church. It was a library. It's not, it's not in a shopping center. So anyway, I just thought the sign and the license should have been first before it was put up. It should have been gotten at the city hall.
You are correct. They should have gotten a business license.
I don't know what the license is, if they then get a fine or what's hap, what's going to happen. I mean, I think that's the city halls and the clerk's discretion or they've got the rules and the, the numbers. Okay. So let's see. You know, because I'm really, I don't know. I've been here a long time. And, you know, I just think that that's a whole different area than the, the shopping center. And if they're going to try to go PD, it's going to be another big issue. Okay. And then my other issue is West Haven for the Arts. Okay. So their, their whole nonprofit is outside of the city limits. Okay. So do they need a license to do their events at this new center?
Like you said, that's really, I'm not usually involved in the business license process. And so that is through Gabe. And so that is through Gabe. I would assume that both the owner and the West Haven Center for the Arts would each need their own business license. But I'm not sure whether maybe, maybe the owners getting one license would, would cover both. I'm, I'm not 100% sure about that.
So I, I'm not in agreean- agreeing, agreement with that. Because they have, that West Haven Center for the Arts had a lot of activities, movie nights, wine, popcorn, you know, some great events, art shows. And that's gonna be big compared to what the Vanderpools want to do. And what they're gonna do is gonna be big. So we're gonna have two groups in one building. So I'm saying they both need their licenses. And I know, I, I don't know, is this, is this a donation thing? Or is it gonna be, are we gonna charge these two groups? Are they going to pay city taxes? You know, all of that is like a question marked for me. It's not that I don't want it to happen, but I want it to be regulated. Okay, because we have a lot of people in town. And that area where it is, is popular. And Erin brought up the parking, and you could go to the Town Hall on Monday, and there's no parking. And they're parking in the fire lane, because they want to get to the beach comber, or somebody wants to get in the city hall, or they want to get to Pilates, or they want to get in a parking lot at school. So it's, it's a busy, a busy spot. And I think the whole thing with the kitchen needs to be a separate condition, because there is a kitchen in there. And there's no stove, but a microwave, a nice sink, a nice bathroom. You know, the building's great, the, for what the Vanderpools want to do. I just don't want to get complicated, because the West Haven Center for the Arts has their board, their ideas. And then Sherry and Chuck Vanderpool have their ideas. And it's all gonna be community. I still think it has to have two licenses and maybe some written regulations, conditions, understandings. And not just from the building and official, but from us, from the Vanderpools, West Haven. Maybe they should come to a meeting and tell us what they want to do in the building with Sherry and Chuck. Okay, and then the last thing, are there sprinklers in there already? Fire sprinklers. Does, do you know, Erin?
I'm, I'm sure there's not.
I don't believe that there. I don't, I don't remember seeing them when I was in there the other night.
Okay.
I'd be shocked if there was. Okay, and yeah, the applicant's saying there are not fire sprinklers.
Okay. I'm done, I'm done for.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, Commissioners Stockness. So just to follow up on the fire, I assume that the building inspector would inspect the building and look at all aspects of building safety, Trevor. And if there's an issue there, they'll, they'll require an update. Okay. Trevor's nodding our head, so. Richard, did you have anything you wanted to add? You're the only commissioner so far that hasn't had a chance.
Uh, yes, I did have a couple of things. Fundamentally, I, I like the idea of this project. I am somewhat surprised that we're even trying to look at this at this point, because it will come back to us for a zoning change. So I'm not sure what impact we're having on the whole project, but nevertheless. So, one, I, I am, as, as Diana's indicated, I'm a little concerned about the parking, too. And, and, and it's been clarified somewhat through, obviously, some discussions that have happened outside of this, this, this meeting. And of course, the first thing I thought of was trying to understand what would happen at night for basketball and volleyball and whatever other sports that hopefully we'll get back to having it in the evening, and how that gets de-conflicted with the school. And the other thing, of course, that comes to mind is that the, there are various festivals, Fish Festival, Trinidad and Clamb Beach Run, other, other activities that occur during, during the year that also would impact parking as well. So, and I, I can't say, or I don't think we can dictate the right way to do it. I think that we go somewhat in the right direction with the letter from the school, from the principal. But i- in my mind, I think it, I would suggest a little bit more of a memorandum of understanding between the school and, and the property owners, only in the sense that the devil's in the details. And the last thing we want is for people to be upset because we weren't able to de-conflict something that hadn't been thought of in terms of, in light of the letter that we currently have. Now, it's broad, I understand that, but I just feel like, just, my gut feel is that we need something just a little bit stronger. I'm not sure that we can make that a condition of approval, but that is a, would be my primary concern. The, the, the other thing that was a little concerning to me was the OWTS requirement. I understand the 450 gallons per day. I, clearly, that's based on the size of the system. What isn't clear, though, is if this is for all water use in the building, or is this just for water that goes into the septic system? And then the second part of that is, how do we confirm if it is only the septic system water use? How do we discriminate between general water use and septic system water use? And then the third part of that is, that says it's going to be, uh, annual water use is on an annu- I'm sorry, average water use should be on an annual basis. And I don't understand how we do that if we're going to allow this project to move forward now. We have no indication of what the water use currently is. It sounds like we would have to wait a year to get information before we could say that they either met the requirement or not. Now, I, I realize it's in the, in the details, but I, I do think that it, especially in light of the fact that there are going to be activities which will have, let's say, 40 or 50 people. I think that was even suggested by the new owner. So 40 or 50 people. And we always know that there's always a controversy between dose rate into a system, the septic system versus annual rate. So I would be concerned about how we handle the, the flow rate for, for not only the septic system, but the, the entire water for the, for the property. I think I have one more question. Yeah, I was a little concerned that we didn't hear from neighbors. I'm also, and I know we've had this discussion before, but I also get a little concerned about the 100-feet distance for notification. I think that's way too short, particularly in light of this is a, a, a property, a parcel that will have, will generate some noise. And I firmly believe that the owners will do what they're supposed to do. But it won't be the first time that people have complained about noise from the center of the city. And, and so I think that's a factor that, that we'd need to consider, perhaps as part of the zoning change. I'm, I'm not sure. The last item is, you know, we're putting a lot of restrictions, it seems, on, on this property. And Trevor, is it your understanding that these requirements will flow with the land? Or is this just limited to the current owners? And, and with that, I think those are my questions or comments.
Thank you. Trevor, did you want to make any comments on OWTS on the usage forming with the property, that kind of stuff?
Yes. Yeah, the MOU, I think that's probably a good idea. I mean, we could, you know, we could add to the condition that, you know, the applicants develop an MOU with, with the school that addresses festivals and activities outside of regular school hours. The OWTS, yeah, you know, I thought about landscaping. We have an allowance in the STR ordinance for 15% above the design flow to allow for landscaping. There's not a lot of landscaping on this lot. I, I don't know if they irrigate. But I didn't think that that would be a big percentage of use. And the annual, I think, I think that's a good point. I, I think, again, I, I got that language from the STR ordinance, but this is, this is a little bit different. And so we could just take average water use as limited to the design flow of 450 gallons per day. And so we could look at that at any time. You know, with, without a time limit on, on the, on the average. So we could change that. The notice, I, I did, I do tend to extend that to at least 150 feet. So I did do a 150-foot notice. And then, you know, it's also posted around town. Conditions would, would be in effect as long as the use is, is in effect. So it would not, it would not continue once the, the zoning is changed. If a new, if, if the current owners were to sell and the new owners took over, you know, these conditions would continue to apply as long as that's still what they're doing. I imagine they might do something else, though, and then we'd have to revisit this.
Right, thank you. I'll just add a few co- oh, sorry, go ahead, Richard, did you want to reply?
Yeah, and just, just for clarification with respect to an MOU or whatever we decide, my concern is a method that is clear to everyone to de-conflict conflicts, de-conflict, to de-conflict activities. It's, that, that's what my concern is. And if the property owner and the school can reach some sort of a, you know, process or agreement on this is what takes priority, this is how we're going to de-conflict conflicts, that, that, that's my main concern. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that, Richard. And, and Commissioner Stockness's concern and yours about parking and Commissioner Hicken. And so I under- I understand. I, I, overall, I'm very positive about this project. I, I would be excited to have another opportunity for small events. And, you know, some of these classes, I think, probably won't attract large numbers, but will be quality, you know, art classes, yoga, things like that. Or it would be nice not to have to drive to Arcana and Eureka for those services. You know, decrease our carbon footprint and have, you know, more of a sense of community. And hopefully, when we are done with the pandemic, we'll be able to do more of that kind of thing. And I also would hope and assume that perhaps the acoustics in this building are, are maybe better than the ones in the, in the city hall for some of the music performances. And so that could be quite nice. I, I don't know if that's true. It would be nice if it was. So overall, but I do agree with, you know, at least an informal MOU or discussion with the school, just to make sure that, you know, prioritization of uses is firmly with some of the larger, at least, school activities. But, but I assume that a lot of that will get worked out over time. I, too, like Commissioner Johnson, was at first looking at it and wondering if this was a planning commission decision, because it's not a rezoning. It's really a usage that falls within the purview of the PNR zone. So I don't have any strong objections to it at all. So that's kind of where I'm, what I'm thinking at the moment. So let me open up to any public comments. I don't think we have members of, any members of the public on, in the meeting at the moment, other than the applicant. So, so with that, I see no public comments. So I'll bring it back to the commission. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion? Oh, Commissioner Stockness?
I, I want to bring up the agreement with the school, because if the president of the board didn't know about the parking and the agreement, and the principal just took it on by herself, that's not okay with me. This needs to be brought to the school board so they have the knowledge. So if there is, the parent, if, if the parents need to know something, they have that knowledge. So, anyway, I just think that the more details between the school and the applicant, but it needs to be addressed by the school board also, not just the principal.
So one option would be to, maybe I'll take a stab at a motion. So, which would be, based on the information submitted in the application, including in the staff report and public testimony, I find that the proposed activities are consistent with the zoning and other applicable regulations as submitted and conditioned herein, with the caveat that item condition number three, that the applicant will work with the school board and will negotiate a written MOU in terms of parking usage. That, let's see, was there another one? Oh, that the kitchen will not be used for cooking unless some agreement is reached with the, I guess, the Department of Health. And I think that was it for the conditions. And so with that, I would make a motion to approve the project with those, those conditional changes. Does that make sense, you guys, and any comments?
I would comment, I, I mean, I think you make a good point that this is, we're not approving a permit. This is, I mean, it's, you know, the uses, the uses are currently allowed. I mean, the, the church could hold special events whenever they wanted without approval. And, and they did sometimes, from my understanding. And, and that has changed over the years. I, I don't, you know, I don't think the city should be dictating how the school operates in terms of the, you know, the principal versus the board. If, if the principal gives that permission, that's good enough for me. And if the board wants to take that up with the principal, I think that's an internal issue.
So maybe it's just a, yeah, it would be nice if they spoke to one another, but it's not a condition for the applicant.
I would, I would add, yeah, you know, I, I think it would be fine to add to condition three to the end of that sentence, and she'll coordinate with the school regarding school events outside of regular hours. You know, because it, it might, you know, it might be a small school event outside of regular hours. We're in a small class that they really wouldn't conflict. So, you know, as long as they work that out, that's fine. And then, yeah, adding to number eight, the, the no cooking without city and DEH approval.
Okay, so what I hear then is, for condition three, we're adding just special events. So including, so activities shall only occur outside Trinity Elementary School operating hours, special events, holidays, weekends, and evenings, right?
Well, I, I think, because again, I think there are potentially, you know, basketball practices.
Large special events.
Um, yeah, so I think just coordinating with the school is, is fine. And I, you know, they, they do have to get a business license on an annual basis. And, you know, if, if parking does become a problem, I think we can re, readdress this.
Okay. All right, so, so then what we're saying is the conditions stand as is with the no cooking added to eight, and the assumption that the parking will be worked out between the applicant and the school. parking will be worked out between the applicant and the school as contained in the letter from the principal. Commissioner Hakenan?
I would just point out one thing. One, condition four says that none of this is allowable if the parking agreement goes away. So if the school district says, hey, no, we're done with that, then the whole thing comes tumbling down. And I guess to, to Richard's point, and, and other folks have mentioned it. I guess, to be honest, I'm unclear what exactly it is I'm being asked to vote on. This is, I, I don't, I don't think that this really, in my opinion, unless I'm missing something, requires any action from us. And do we have any standing to impose any of these conditions as they are because of our existing uses that are permitted under the zoning and the parking requirements that were grandfathered in? When, I mean, I don't know. I, I'm unclear what I'm being asked to vote on, to be perfectly frank.
That's a fair, fair point, Commissioner Hakenan. I think that was, that was kind of what we were, what we were probing a bit earlier. So.
I mean, is there even action required?
I think, I think what it is, is basically, I'm asking for guidance here because it would normally be up to me to look at a proposal and say, yeah, that's consistent with zoning. But I think, I think this one, for me to say it's consistent with zoning, it needs some boundaries in order to, to do that. And so, and again, there was enough public interest and not enough in the city's regulations, you know, for me to feel comfortable setting those boundaries myself, you know, without more guidance in the regulations. And so that's why I'm asking you for guidance on. So basically, this is you giving me guidance on a staff determination and, and helping me set those limits on, on what that is.
So we're really, so it's a question of whether we need to vote, but it sounds like it's more that the planning commission agrees that this is consistent with the zoning. These conditions appear to be reasonable with the addition of the cooking in number eight. And then we all either agree or not. And Commissioner Stockness, I believe you wanted to add something. You're on mute.
There you go. I'm, I'm still not comfortable because we heard nothing from the West Haven Center for the Arts. You know, and then we didn't get to talk because of their conflict, you know, with, with the sound. And, you know, they, they did their proposal, which is fine, but I'm not comfortable doing this because I want to know what they want to do before they do something. And they haven't heard about the parking. And I don't know. I just think they need to be in this discussion. So I, I probably won't vote yes. Until I hear them in a letter or, you know, person.
Okay, I understand. Commissioner Johnson, did you want to add something? And then I'm probably going to go ahead and call a vote. You're on mute, Richard.
No, I'll get this right yet. So, yeah, I, I understand that. But I think we have to look at this in, in a little bit higher elevation. I don't care what West Haven Center for the Arts does. With, when they come in within the city limits and do or support or have an activity, they have to go through the normal requirements to obtain the proper license for whatever they are intending to do. So I, and by the way, it's not only, it could not only be West Haven Center for the Arts, it could be ABC Entertainment Group that wants to come in from another, another town. I, I think the key here is that what we are saying, that the activities that we've laid out in the, what staff has laid out, and we are asked to agree to or not agree to, are consistent with the current rules we have in place. And it's, it's going to be up to the owner of the property to ensure that they meet the requirements. So I, I'm not concerned about any outside organization because they will have to follow the business regulations of the city.
Okay. All right. I am, oh, Commissioner Hopkins, did you want to add something?
Yeah, to me, it seems like a very similar to the church. And I'm glad that the building inspector is going to get in there from the city perspective. And I'll second your motion.
Okay. All right, we have a second. So this would be that we agree that this falls within the current zoning with the conditions that we mentioned. So if everybody understands what they're bothering for, I think we do now. All those in favor? Aye and opposed. Okay. And Commissioner Stockness is the best. Okay. So with that, the, this project passes as consistent with the zoning. And I wish the Vanderpools much success with their new endeavors. Thank you very much. All right. Folks, we are going to switch now. This is going to hurt your head. This is a big switch. We're going to, we're going to ADUs now, accessory dwelling units.
Simple stuff.
Go from, yeah, go from right brain to left brain real quick here. I'm just kidding. A little, a little levity as we shift gears here. Okay. So Trevor, I think everybody's okay because it's been only about an hour, so I won't call for a break. But Trevor, are you ready for your staff report?
Sure. So it wasn't the last meeting, but the meeting before, I guess, the June meeting. No, July meeting. We looked at the standards for ADUs, so height, size, those sorts of things. And so we got through those. So that's basically, we had gone through JADUs, we had gotten through the procedures, we had gotten through the standards. So now I put everything together into an ordinance. Those were all the various pieces of the previous ordinance. And then, but I did add a couple of things. So I, I went and looked at the County Amendacino's new ADU regulations that have been submitted to the Coastal Commission. So there are, there have been Coastal Commission staff feedback on that ordinance, though it has not yet gone to hearing before the Coastal Commission. But based on that ordinance and the comments from the Coastal Commission, I stole a few things. And so I created a new permit type called a ministerial CDP because ADUs are considered development by the Coastal Commission. Yet the state housing law requires them to be approved ministerially, which means that there's no discretionary hearing. There is public notice. The public can appeal ADU permits to the Coastal Commission, not to the city, within the Coastal Commission appeal area. So that is not the, even though the city is, is entirely in the coastal zone, except for a tiny little corner up in the north, northeast. Not the entire city is appealable to the Coastal Commission. So, so I added this new type of permit following that model. The other thing I added was the cap. So Mendocino used a cap on second units to minimize the impacts on coastal resources, which is what the Coastal Commission will be looking at from us. And I did talk to Coastal Commission staff, and that seemed to be, you know, kind of an acceptable solution. So so I basically put all the ordinance together. It's, it's going to continue needing some, some tweaking and massaging, but I think it is to a point where I can get it now to the Coastal Commission and HCD. That's the Department of Housing and Community Development. HCD, HCD gets to approve ADU ordinances, and the Coastal Commission gets to approve ADU ordinance. And sometimes their interests are a bit at odds. So I would like to just hand this off to them and they can battle it out and see what they have to say. So once you guys are satisfied with it, that will be the next step in the process. I, at the last meeting, Richard had mentioned having sort of a decision tree matrix. And I, I don't want to spend too much time on that until we get the ordinance more finalized. But I did provide a little bit of some bullet points here to try and help you understand the different permits and the different processes. So so there's just a, a regular ministerial ADU permit. And that would be used for JADUs, which are not considered development under the Coastal Act, unless they require changes to the septic system that go beyond repair and maintenance. So for JADUs that do not require septic improvements, they would just get a regular old ministerial ADU permit. For, for ADUs and for JADUs that do require septic upgrades, because septic upgrades require coastal development permits unless they're just repairing maintenance. That would be a ministerial CDP. So those are two, basically two new permits that, that this ordinance is creating. And, and that's, and so the ministerial CDP would be for ADUs that meet all those development standards that we talked about at the last meeting. And then there are certain development standards that you can deviate from, say, size, for example. And so if someone wants to have a, have an ADU that's outside of those development standards, but still meets other zoning requirements, they can apply for a regular old conditional use permit. And a conditional use permit is also a CDP. So that would cover the CDP. And then if, if, if an ADU requires a CDP and it's also new construction, then that would also be design review. So, and then building permits obviously required for everything. So it's a little, takes a little bit of time to wrap your head around. But that's sort of the, the outline of, of what we're looking at with this.
Sounds like to some degree the, if they're, if they're just converting an existing building, no change to the building, no additions, then it's more ministerial. And, and, but everything requires a building permit. So if it's, if it, but if it's any change to the new construction modifies something, then there could be a design review triggered and a trip to the planning commission. Is that correct?
Mostly, but new, new construction that meets those standards, which there's a height limit and a size limit, would not require a design review. And that's, you know, I think that, like I've mentioned before, that I think view, private view protection is going to be the biggest issue with this ordinance with, with the public. Because the HCD is not going to allow that. That is not consistent with, with state housing law. And the Coastal Act does not override that because the Coastal Act does not protect private views. So I think we're really stuck with that. And that there is going to be some new construction that we have to allow ministerially.
All right, let me go ahead and open it to questions. Any questions or comments?
Well, I, I guess I'll start off. So, yeah, thanks, Trevor, for putting this all in one pile. What a pile it is. No pun intended. So just a couple of, of comments. I do agree, I think, at this point, and, and I, I don't think that we're necessarily throwing it over the fence. But I, I do agree that because this is so complex and, and, and it is very clear that, that there will be a huge amount of input that I'm, I'm inclined not to spend a lot of time trying to rework or try to reword things too much because I, I'm sure that we'll have our hands full when it comes back after review. But having said that, just a couple of things I would like to just clarify. On page one, under definitions, item C, converted existing space. You've defined that, and I understand that definition, but at the very end of that paragraph, you also referenced something called an independent living unit. And I, I would just suggest that we add that to the list of definitions as because that, that, that could be a little bit of, well, always is controversial as, as to exactly what independence means in terms of a, 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 a unit. I had another question, only in the sense that I would just like to know the rationale for the, the cap. I don't have any trouble with the cap, but I would just like to know, and I think the public deserves to know, what's the justification for the 36 ADUs? And, and so I think that was, makes, would, would be useful. My next comment is on page three of 12. This is under paragraph D, subparagraph two. And it says, ADU shall meet all the standards of such requirements, et cetera. And then the next phrase to me is very awkward, and I would like to get your interpretation of it, Trevor. It says, JADUs that require OWTS improvement that don't qualify for a repair or maintenance exception shall be issued a ministerial coastal development permit. I have trouble understanding, are we saying that that if a JDU requires OWTS improvement? I don't understand that it doesn't qualify for a repair or maintenance exemption. It, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused.
So so say they had to just put in a bigger tank, that, that would probably fall under repair and maintenance in most locations of the city. So they could get the regular non-CDP ministerial ADU permit. But if they have to add new leach lines or maybe probably upgrading a pit from, from a pit to leach lines, those aren't going to fall under repair and maintenance. And so that would then step it up to the level of the ministerial CDP just because of the OWTS improvements.
Okay. I, I think I understand that. That's where I think some sort of visual or decision matrix would really be helpful as to understand what that, how that would work. And then my last comment is, it is just a, a simple one. On page 11 of 12, at the bottom of the page, under paragraph, building and fire requirements, item two says that JDU shall be equipped with at least one smoke detector and carbon monoxide detector. Obviously, that's the right thing to do. But I didn't see any reference to what the requirements were for ADUs. So I don't know if there is a different set of requirements or if it just needs to be consistent between the two. Otherwise, like I said, I think I'm ready to allow someone else that's much more qualified than me to look at this in detail.
Thank you. Thanks, Richard. Aaron, did you have any comments?
I did, yeah. Just a couple of clarifying questions. And great job on this, Trevor. Page two of your staff report. You talk about the three basic findings. I just want to clarify that's water, wastewater and parking. Is that what you mean by that? You said a minister ADU permit, applicable standard, and three basic findings can be made. I'm just curious, what are those three basic findings? Yeah, I'm sure they're here and I just missed them.
Yeah. And, you know, I think there is some organization issues. I did have some questions. Some sections maybe seem like they could go here or there, and this might be one of those. So this is under, it starts on page four, and the three findings are at the top of page five. So this is the process
There we go.
issuing the permit procedures. And so those are the findings that I have to make when I issue a ministerial ADU permit, whether it's a CDP or not.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. The other ones are relatively minor. Page eight, the section E. the section E, the setbacks. So just so I'm clear, it's very clear in the height one. But so existing, an existing building, you know, we've got all the alleyways in, some already exist. Those are fine to be converted into an ADU by somebody, right? If they're within existing setbacks. Okay. And then the last thing, no, sorry, two, two last things. On page 10, that very first item two at the very top, I understand what you're trying to say there. I just think that needs to be cleared up. It's just a little convoluted, you know, it's not to be used as short-term rental, rented for more than 30 days. And then shall, it, it just, it's a little awkward. I don't know. I don't have any suggestions how to make it less awkward necessarily. And then my last question was on page 12, we mentioned a deed restriction for the JADUs. Would something like that need to also be in place for the ADUs? I didn't see that when I spun through that section kind of, or is that implied?
You know, that's a good question. Those, that came out of the state's JADU standards, but it's not in the ADU standards. I don't know what the reasoning is. So that's just following the state rules. But I think that's a good, good question.
And maybe we'll hear something back on that. Okay, that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Stockness?
So Trevor, when somebody wants to put in an ADU, would the neighbors be notified?
Not, not for a, a non-CDP permit. For a CDP permit, yes, the neighbors are notified. But the permit would not be appealable to the city. It would only be appealable to the coastal commission and within the coastal commission's appealable jurisdiction. So say up in, on Berry Road, most of Berry Road is not in the coastal commission's appeal jurisdiction. So it's a strange situation. I would send out notices to neighbors and if they object, there's nothing we can do. There's no recourse.
So there's no, no view protection for the neighbors either. Yeah. So this is, this is a little odd and I know, you know, we need housing. But I don't know. And I, I wanted them to have sprinklers too, because of all this water, no water and all the fires everywhere. And what are the fees then? Are there, are they building permit fees? Are they based on the size or how, how do they do the fees then?
That is a good question. There should be something in here about fees being set by resolution of the city council. If it's not, it should.
Okay. Well, you, you defined it in one, I underlined it, but let me see. I can find it. Okay, page.
I think it's on page 12.
12. Okay. So the city council permit. So are, are they gonna read the application, the city council? Or are, are you gonna do that ministerially and the building inspector and, and the city clerk?
Well, the council will review and approve this ordinance. But then they will not review the ADU permit.
So they'll, they'll set a fee when they read the ordinance. Is that what'll happen?
And they can change it from time to time by resolution rather than amending the ordinance. But that's, it really should be. Yeah, that's one of these questions of where some of these sections go in the ordinance because that may, that's from, again, the state standards, that, that last section under JADUs. But really all fees should be set by the city council and that should probably be up with the permit procedures.
Okay. Well, good job on the definitions. And I like, I've always liked bullet points because it gets right to the issue. Thank you, Trevor.
Commissioner Hopkins, do you have anything you wanna add?
I was impressed with how the state put this all together from a code point of view. So I'm not too worried there. And then as I understand it, if there is a, a view violation, that would go to the coastal commission. And that's where that could be discussed, correct?
Yeah. So the coastal act does protect public views. So if someone wanted to argue that, you know, a, a view from Edward Street is gonna be blocked, you know, or, or something like that, then they could appeal it to the coastal commission based on that, yes. But if their own personal view is going to be impacted, no, they couldn't, the coastal commission would not accept an appeal.
I see. Yeah, it's an interesting one. Thank you. This looks good. But yeah, at first I was worried about the not being able to appeal it to anybody. And, but it's, there's not much you can really do. And it's, it's an interesting one. Anyway, thank you.
This is, yeah, it's different. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I, you know, for clarification, is it true, Trevor, then, that under any of these scenarios, the city council will not hear an appeal?
That's my understanding. Yeah, that's, that's how I read the state law.
I'm, I'm just looking forward to the process of selling this to the public. And I think that's a very important point that needs to be brought up when the city council reviews this ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, yes, you're correct. And, and I did wanna address your question, Richard, where the 36 came from. That's just a starting point, but it came from the water demand assessment. The water demand assessment assumed a build out of 36 ADUs. So that was what I started with.
Just real quick, to the viewpoint quickly, that's gonna partially be governed by the 16-foot limit, right?
Yes.
I mean, that's designed to kind of hopefully mitigate and, and avoid some of that. So we'll see, right?
That's correct. Yes. Now there is, I think if you're adding on to an existing structure, you can be as tall as the existing structure. That might be, so we, you know, maybe we could change that and see what HCD says about that. Cause you know, expanding a house out, you know, could also impact people's views certainly.
Wouldn't that come to us anyway though? Just like a remodel on a home? Or if somebody says I'm doing an ADU, then it goes down a different pathway?
Not if you're doing an attached ADU.
That I never planned to.
That's what I was asking before.
Drew brought that up and I think that's a really good, and that, you know, I think we need to, you know, there's the deed restriction for JADUs. I think we need to include something for ADUs that, you know, whether it's five years, 10, or, or if it is ever converted back to a single family residence, it requires design review. I mean, what do you, it's already constructed. What do you do? I, but yes, I think, or, or that there's a minimum amount of time that it has to stay an ADU, 10 years, something like that. Because yeah, I think that that is a real possibility that someone says, hey, I'm building an, an ADU. I'm just gonna add on without design review. And then, oh no, I, I'm just gonna make it part of my house. So yeah, we, we need to have a, a check for that.
Yeah, that was my concern, is that could be used as an, essentially an extension to the house. Commissioner Hopkins, I think I saw your hand up and then Commissioner Stockness?
Oh, I agree. I, the whole purpose is to create housing. And so for 10 years, I would say it's unlimited. I give, that's the way it is. If you're going to do that, then it's a rental forever. In Trinidad. Yeah, that's my two cents. Thanks.
Commissioner Stockness?
So the state has mandated that they can do what they want and their views aren't an issue? Is that where it's coming from, the state?
Yeah, that's where it's coming from. You know, I can, I'm, I'm planning on, you know, making the case to HCD that we have, you know, since the seventies, we have this longstanding protection for, for private views. And that if they, if they, well, we'll, we'll see what they say. If they have any, you know, if they have any, get, will, you know, if they're willing to give at all, because I, you know, I think that the risk for them is that the city's not gonna adopt an ADU ordinance if we can't, you know, somehow protect private views still.
It seems like our position as an LCP should protect us to some degree even from the state, right? From the state regulations, Trevor?
It does, but so when, when we redo our LCP, which we need, we desperately need to revise our, our regulations, the coastal commission, we are the, the private view protection is not going to be part of the LCP. The coastal commission is not gonna certify that. So they did in this one, because it was the first in the state to be certified and we were a guinea pig and it was an experiment. And then they realized, oh, so, so what happens now, for example, is if someone were to appeal a project in Trinidad, like say, some, some of you might remember the Marshall Residence in, in front of the fourplex. And, and Mike Reinman appealed that and I, I believe that the appeal was based on views, but he appealed it based on geologic and some other concerns. And so the coastal commission did take that appeal based on the geologic issues. But if he had appealed that because it was gonna impact the views from his fourplex, the coastal commission would have rejected that appeal.
Okay. Thank you. Interesting. All right. I think we've had all the comments. There are no public in attendance at this time. So I think I'm gonna go ahead and move on unless somebody has something else they wanna add. Okay? All right. So what do we do now? We have already gone through everything, but the commissioner's report, sorry. So at this point, if there are any reports from standing committees, if the commissioners would like, okay, I think we're gonna pass on that. So Trevor, it's back to you. Oh, sorry. Commissioner Johnson?
I'd just like to point out, I just realized that there are a number of comments from the Vanderpools on the chat that address some of the issues that we've been talking about. So I appreciate the fact that they did provide additional information regarding West Haven Center of the Arts and other things about the construction of the windows, et cetera, for a good acoustic. So I, I, first I saw it. So I just wanna make sure that that got entered into the record somehow.
Thank you, Richard. I didn't see this first one. So let's see. West Haven is a center, is a nonprofit, wouldn't need a license as they operate with donations. But if someone did yoga, et cetera, they would need a license or aren't fire sprinklers. And then the church, yeah, windows are double pane. So that's good for noise control or acoustics. Okay. So Trevor, we're back to you with staff report.
We've actually been making good progress. I've been sort of looking at our priorities that we set for ourselves this year. And I think we're, we've been making good progress. I'm gonna start compiling the data from the parking counts. We did get an ex, the state did extend that SB2 funding for another six months. So that's excellent because we really basically just had till the end of the year to spend it and I didn't think we were going to do that. So we might even maybe do some additional parking counts, add to it if we find some gaps as I do that report. Again, I've been working on, I, I've got most of my responses to the coastal commission on the general plan done. And I'm working with our GIS person on new figures. New, new city limits, new, new planning area. City Limits has been kind of interesting. I, Richard, you, when we looked at the LAFCO's Fear of Influence Report recently, and you noticed the, the city limits was much bigger around Trinidad Bay than what we had on our maps. And, and the county has always shown has that as city limits and I didn't know where it came from. But we actually plotted out the description of what the state granted to the city in terms of the, the bay. And it matches those lines. So that's, those are the correct lines. So, and then also, you know, we have city limits based on the parcel maps, but actually the parcels go down to the high tideline. City limit goes down to the high tideline, not, not the assessor maps, which end at the meander line. So, so we've had to adjust city limits, which has been kind of a, an interesting process. So yeah. So got some applications. We've got coming up that we're working through and the STR ordinance is going to go to the council in October. And we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep chugging away at what we can.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. We're making good progress. Future agenda items. Just a side note, I went out for a run this morning and, and one of our constituents stopped me and asked me what the siren was this morning. And I said, well, I don't think it was a tsunami siren because that's not working. Did anybody hear a siren this morning?
Yeah, it was a medical aid at Chevron.
It was what?
There was a medical aid at the Chevron this morning.
Oh, okay. All right. That's what she heard. Thank you. I thought you might know, Aaron. I should have stopped and asked you. Passed your house?
Right? Yeah.
Okay. Any, Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I just realized I, I should have maybe said this earlier. I had a, a, a resident of the city sent out an email regarding some construction or some digging that was done on Van Wick. And I neglected to mention that earlier, but do we know what's going on there? And only so that I can respond to this resident with an explanation.
So I didn't see that myself. Eli went down there and reported to me and asked me about it. So he said that no, there's been no disturbance on the trail other than gophers. That was his interpretation that, that it hadn't, it, it wasn't manmade work. There was some loose soil, but it appeared to be from gophers. And that the work that was being done was leveling some soil around an existing deck up at the house. And that would not rise to the level of needing a permit. And I, so far the coastal commission has not required gophers to get coastal development permits. So far.
Okay. I, I, the impression I got is that this small digging device was right on the trail. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up, Richard. I forgot about that too. I got that, I was copied on that email. And so, so will Eli get back to the person, Trevor?
Yeah, I assume Eli will send, will get back to them.
Okay. And just a side note, the gophers are really going crazy this year. I mean, it is unbelievable. My backyard is like, I'm afraid to walk across the yard. I'm gonna like fall through into some, you know, crevasse of gopher hole. So they, they need to get those CDPs.
My coworker, her nephew recently broke his leg in a gopher hole.
No way.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I was being, I thought I was being facetious, but it is, you know, they are getting kind of, they're, they're joining forces and it's really incredible. Anyway, okay. they're, they're joining forces, and it's really incredible. Anyway, okay. Uh, any other future agenda items you guys wanna add? I'm gonna follow up on this tsunami siren. I, I don't know, that's been on there for a year now. Diane, maybe you know something about it?
It's Shirley Laos at the Red.
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna send her an email as soon as we're done, and just see if we can close that out.
We've had that on there for quite a while. And the gophers, they're looking for water.
Yeah, that's what I, I had to, I assume so, that it's just so dry.
Water, you have to water between five PM and, you know, ten in the morning now.
Yeah.
That's when they came up.
Well, I haven't been watering my lawn at all, so I don't know what they're looking for, but.
I'm just talking about plants. They're my plants.
Yeah. Oh, right. All right.
It does look like we'll get a real rainstorm this weekend, so.
I know, and we need it. Yes, we need to, yeah, we need some water. All right, anything else anybody wants to add? Parting comments? Okay, look at that, an hour and a half. This may be a record. We're adjourned. Have a great vacation, Trevor, Diane.
Yeah, Trevor, enjoy.
Yeah, thanks very much.
See you guys next month.
Yeah, see you next month.